How come it's so quiet in here? Good evening. I'd like to call the regular commission meeting for Benita Springs Fire and Rescue, Monday, May 13th. The order, please rise for chaplain.
Each month, we have a moment of silence for firefighters across the U.S. who've lost their lives. And this month, we'd like to have silence for five firefighters. Dear God, we give honor to those who have committed their lives to serving and protecting others. And those that have lost their lives this past month, we pray that you will watch over them for eternity, that you'll be with their families, give them strength and encouragement. Lord, we pray for protection for the firefighters in Benita and the surrounding area, that you might watch over them, that will protect them, watch over them and their families. And we thank you for the opportunity we have to be in this nation, in this country, and the freedoms we have, and being able to assemble like this. And, Lord, we thank you for your blessing and ask for your wisdom and guidance. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any public comments on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, the first order of business is having a vote on the appointment of a new commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a nomination. Of Stephanie.
Stephanie Kissinger.
Kissinger.
You have a second? I'll second the motion. You take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tommy?
No.
Okay. Motion carries two to one. Congratulations. Stephanie, is she in here? There she is, right there. At this point, I think we need to do a swear-in, correct?
Correct. Ann Marie will do that.
Stephanie, please come up.
I solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of fire commissioner for the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District. And which I am now about to enter, so help me God.
Ready?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brandon, for applying. Thank you for everybody coming this evening. I need a motion for the meeting, approve the April 8, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
I move we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I need one motion to approve the April 2024 financials, February 2024 current expenditures. I'm not sure why that says February. I thought so, okay. April 2024 current expenditures and ACH payments, acknowledgment of financial report, acknowledgment of wire transfers and transfers between accounts.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we need a motion for the PO over $10,000 for CRS technology.
I move we approve that amount.
Second, somebody?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now comes the fun part, the Phoenix Awards.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Madden at this point for a Phoenix, very special Phoenix Award.
Absolutely, this is fantastic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Commissioners. Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
In our industry, we give out an award, it's called a Phoenix Award. And you get a Phoenix Award if you successfully revive somebody who was in cardiac arrest. Unfortunately, when you go into cardiac arrest, you have about a 10% to 15% chance of surviving that cardiac arrest. But like the chief said, tonight is special because the patient that they saved, not only did they do it once, they came back, the same crew, five months later, and ran the same cardiac arrest on the same patient and saved his life again. Two times. Astronomical, it's never heard of. It's incredible. I've read the reports, I've seen the data, what these crews did for this patient, literally saved his life. This patient is alive and well today. What also saved this person's life, and I take this opportunity every chance I get, is bystander CPR. This person got CPR the first time from a deputy sheriff before we got there, and the second time, he got CPR from his wife. I guarantee you, right now, as I'm standing here today, that if that person did not get bystander CPR, they would not be alive. I guarantee you. Please learn to do CPR. Please tell your friends and your family to learn CPR. All right, I'm gonna get off my high horse. So please come up as I call your name, and stay up here, and we're gonna take a group photo, okay? So this patient is a little older, really wanted to be here and wanted me to pass on the thanks for saving his life, not once, but twice. Okay, so great job, guys, awesome job, amazing. First, our first recipients, Battalion Chief Jimmy Zamora. This is Battalion Chief Zamora's second Phoenix Award. Next, we have Lieutenant Philip Kinsey. The third. This is Lieutenant Kinsey's third Phoenix Award. Firefighter Sean Linehan. This is firefighter Linehan's fourth Phoenix Award. Firefighter Dylan Hood. This is firefighter Hood's first Phoenix Award. Firefighter Nicholas Kemmerer. This is firefighter Kemmerer's third Phoenix Award. Firefighter Daniel Mitchell. This is firefighter Mitchell's second Phoenix Award. Firefighter William Scott. Firefighter Scott's second Phoenix Award. And they were unable to make it by what I recognize from Lee County EMS, paramedic Martin, paramedic Val, EMT Fletcher, and ENT Rosenblum. Congratulations. Chief?
No.
One, two, three.
Congratulations.
My turn?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, next on the presentations is service awards. So this one is for firefighter Tim Bogas, 30 years, 30 years of doing this job, 30 years of coming to work every third day, 30 years of, you know, leaving his wife and children at home. And Tim's been one of those guys, he started out as a volunteer here, you know, I consider Tim my best friend at this fire department. He's making a run towards the title, but in order to beat the man, you gotta, in order to beat the man, you gotta beat him. So, you know, Tim's one of those guys, he's that go-to guy, he's that de facto leader, he's the one, he's that senior firefighter that everybody goes to, even lieutenants. When he's on calls, the lieutenants will say, hey, what do you think, Tim, or what do you think about this? Tim's been on USAR since inception, Tim's been our staple of the boat program. He is the one that everybody has to go through to get signed off on the boat on sea shift. You know, he knows that boat in and out, he knows Station 7, he knows all of Benita. You know, he's grew up here in Benita, he's been a local resident his entire life here. You know, Tim is just one of those firefighters that everybody wants to be like, and that, you know, we always talk about, you know, everybody may not like me, there may be people out there, believe it or not, that don't like me, but there's not a person out there that doesn't like Tim Bogas. You know, he's that guy that everybody, you know, wants to be like. You know, that's what we want in a firefighter, that longevity, that person, that leadership. You know, you don't have to wear a badge, you don't have to have a gold badge to be a leader, and Tim's that guy on sea shift. So congratulations, Tim, 30 years.
Probably more so congratulations than Jamie.
The next presentation we have is for promotions. So the next one we have is, I want to promote Jordan Green. You know, Jordan Green, again, true leadership, you know, I don't know if it comes from his background of being a teacher, having to teach kids, and some of us act like kids sometimes, but he's that leadership that we look for. You know, when Jordan came aboard, immediately, he was that person that everybody looked at, he was that person that everybody talked about, like, and that, I know it's gonna hurt, Jordan, it's gonna hurt, I'm gonna say it. Everybody would tease him, instead of calling him Lieutenant Green or Acting Lieutenant Green, there's always Chief Green, Chief Green. You know, because that's what they look at when they see Jordan Green, is that upward mobility, that person that's gonna, you know, go to the top. You know, he was an acting lieutenant, and then this past year, or these past two years, he's studied, he's kept his nose down, he's been that person to really make a name for himself. So this year, when it was time to become the lieutenant's promotional list, Jordan was that guy that came to the top. He was, when we had Paul Canning leaving, he was the one that we gave the lieutenant badge to because he deserved it. At this time, I'd like to call his wife up, Tiana, and she's gonna be the one to pin him. Congratulations. The next pinning we have is for Ashley Diaz. You know, Ashley came to us as an administrative assistant. You know, she was here and she had a good background in FEMA, she did some planning classes, you know, and as she was up in the front and doing things, she kept asking questions. She wanted to be involved, she wanted to do certain things. You know, and then she came to me a couple of years ago and said, hey, I think I want to do this inspector thing. And so we sent her to class, and she went, and she took all the classes, passed with flying colors. And then, you know, then came the state test, she passed the state test with flying colors. Then as the year, we'll say the year went by, you know, I offered her to go out and ride with the inspectors to see if she liked it, to see what she wanted to do, because we'd had another administrative assistant promote up and go into the fire inspection division. So when the position became available, you know, she was the first one I went to. Do you still want this? Do you want it? We paid for it, we want you to do it. And I even, you know, gave her the opportunity to go try it out, you know, because, again, we don't know what we don't know. So she tried it for a month, came back, smile on her face, as she always smiles all the time, she's always got a smile on her face, great attitude, and says, yes, I want this job, I think I'm gonna excel at it. And so tonight, I'm very proud to pin her or have her father, George Diaz, who was a battalion chief, retired battalion chief for the airport fire and rescue, to pin his daughter as a fire inspector. So George, Ashley. And that's all I have now, sir.
Congratulations to everybody. I can take a, I'm gonna take a brief recess here. If everybody would like to cut out, or welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but the important part of the meeting is over, and if you'd like to, we'll take a brief recess here.
Yeah. I don't even see Rick.
More is sitting still there.
Yeah.
Jamie's right over there.
Well, they...
Hopefully, they'll stick around. I don't think they will.
I should've done it earlier.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to, you think, sir? No, 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 he's got 30 years to serve. Oh, 30 years.
35.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. You're welcome. I am. Yeah, yeah. When is... Okay. What's your best time of day to do stuff like this? Okay. Okay. All right, tomorrow, I have an appointment at the dark heart that I cannot write, but my dog will get very anxious.
I understand, I'm first.
Reschedule.
Reschedule any appointments.
I just can't come, it's the dog. How about Friday? Wide open on Friday. Okay, if something comes up, just let me know. I'm very flexible, so I'm open all day. On Friday. Yeah, in the same way, I can. No, well, I know, I have, let me check, I have this other calendar that I have to...
Oh, I got you, just showing up. That's what I was confused about.
Here's the other calendar. So, yeah, Friday, this calendar's good, too. On both. I have two, I mean, I've got this... Okay. 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 All righty, so let me fill this out. Are you saying, are you gonna say first name? Okay. All right. Okay. My first name is Paulette. So... Yeah, that's what I was looking, I'm like, oh goodness, let's see. So, there is that.
I have, you're gonna have to fill it out anyway when we see you tomorrow, or Friday. If you want to just write your social security number, it'll be a four.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Okay, we can take our seats, please. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order. I would like to thank and welcome Mayor Rick Steinmeier, Councilwoman Laura Carr, Councilwoman Jamie Bogas. Thank you so much for coming this evening. Guys do great work.
Thank you, thank you. The best is better than every time. Better every day.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners' business, first thing I'd like to do is thank everybody for the fantastic job on the Phoenix Awards, and as usual, we've come to, we've come to expect it. Again, I'd like to publicly welcome Stephanie to the board, and I look forward to working together. And if anybody else has anything they'd like to add, get the floor.
I do. Welcome. I would just like to say thank you to all of you, and thank you, Chairman Steve, and happy birthday.
Chairman, I'm going to get my speech, I'll be right back.
Okay. I would like to welcome all the scouts that are here today. Thanks for being here, I hope you're learning something.
They may pick up more bad habits around here than good ones, right?
I apologize, Commissioner, there's, we got a strike team of brush trucks up in Estero, now they're just calling another strike team for Collier County, so we're sorry for the interruption.
No, that's fine, I get that. We're waiting on Commissioner Maturro.
Okay.
Are you good for me?
Yep, thank you.
You're up.
I just, I just got played like a Stradivarius, and I apologize publicly. I wanna, I'm having a really bad day, so scouts, there's a lesson learned, there's bad days sometimes when you're grown up. I want to begin by acknowledging that, like all of us, I am far from perfect, yet my dedication to this district and each and every one of you remains unwavering. I know that's hard to believe right now, but it's legit. Whether you're tirelessly serving the people of Benita around the clock or benefiting from the dedication of these individuals, we are all part of this wonderful district. Chief Greg DeWitt, his administration, the support staff, the men and women on the front lines, and we, the commissioners, together form an indispensable unit, we are a team. As a commissioner, my primary objective is to equip every one of you with the necessary tools to execute their duties safely, professionally, and with financial prudence. Throughout my tenure, I've taken a proactive stance anticipating and addressing your needs. From ensuring access to drinking water at every station, providing personal flashlights, working fitness equipment, liquid IV for replenishment, raincoats that not only repel water, but also have reflective properties to keep you safe at night, the introduction of soft tones at each house, and to providing essential equipment and modern technology for accurate reporting. My focus has always been on maintaining a humane approach to our work. My statutory responsibilities are clear, policy and budget. I want to emphasize that my actions have never been aimed at causing frustration or discord with Chief DeWitt or anyone else. Rather, my aim is unity, recognizing our shared goal of delivering the highest level of service to our community. I collaborate closely with Lieutenant Roy Brown, who represents your best interests as the head of your union, and with Chief DeWitt and his team to advocate for policies that enhance both operational effectiveness and fiscal responsibility. I firmly believe in the principle articulated by Sir Richard Branson, clients do not come first, employees come first. If you take care of your employees, they will take care of the clients. In our context, the citizens of Benita Springs are our clients, and it's our collective responsibility to provide them with the best possible service. As we anticipate the arrival of summer, and I'm sweating like a pig, it's imperative that we take proactive measures to safeguard the well-being of our community, particularly our dedicated firefighters. our dedicated firefighters. In light of recent discussions I have had with esteemed officials from the National Weather Service and NOAA, it has become apparent that we are facing the prospect of one of the hottest summers on record with heat indexes expected to reach triple digits. In response to this forecast, I am advocating for the implementation of strategic measures to mitigate the risks associated with excessive heat exposure. One such solution involves equipping every single fire and rescue truck with liquid IV packets, which are proven to aid hydration and maintain electrolyte balance, crucial for sustaining performance in demanding conditions. This doesn't have a backside to it. In pursuit of our shared objective of protecting the men and women who serve our community, I propose a unified effort under the leadership of Greg DeWitt. By collaborating closely and leveraging our collective resources, we can enhance our preparedness and response capabilities for effective, to effectively address the challenges posed by extreme weather events. I urge us all to prioritize the safety and well-being of our firefighters as we enter this challenging season. Together, let us work diligently to ensure Benita Springs remain a safe and resilient community for all of its residents. And I want to say this, because I worked hard on this. I, I want to make sure that you guys have everything you need, that Chief DeWitt and his administration has everything you need. I don't speak for the rest of them, but I know they care. But you need, it's really, really hot and it's going to get bad. You need to have liquid IV on every fire and rescue truck. I know there's policies and procedures we need to follow for budgeting, but we can't wait. It needs to be on your trucks right now. We can't wait. It's so hot. Training, training, we have to have, it can't be discretionary. It has to be policy. If it's hot, I don't want firemen dropping over. My ballywig is policy and financial responsibility. And I am not going to stop. All politics aside, I don't care. I want to make sure that you guys are taken care of. We offer the best service in the state of Florida. And if we take care of you guys, I know you'll take care of the people. I live here. These guys work, we all live here. I want to make sure you have everything you need to get the job done safely, safely. It's to me, I don't want anyone getting hurt. That's imperative to me. Although you might think otherwise, that's the God's honest truth, and I want to make sure you have it. And I'm here to say to my fellow commissioners, we can't wait on liquid IV. You need it on the trucks. We can't wait. We, you need, you need the proper, modern technology. You need report writing. It needs to be done correctly. I know the chief is adamant that he wants the, the client, the patient, taken care of. But we're in a stone age with our stuff, and it's 2024. It's time we get the right things that you guys need. I'm not going to win a popularity contest. I've pissed everybody off you can piss off. Excuse me, girls. And, uh, I'm having a rough day. But the moral to the story is, I stand with the firefighters. I want to keep them safe. I want to keep them in every single thing they need, as long as we can afford it. And if you need something, you let the chief know and we'll get it for you if we can swing it. But the moral to the story is, thank you for everything. It's a terrible job. You deal with life and death every day. Our administration has, has, I don't know about him, but everybody else has dealt with it. And the, the moral to the story is, I'm there for you. I will continue, although you don't think so right now, but I am. And I want to make sure that you have everything you had. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
I don't.
Okay. Next item.
So what are we asking for? I mean, do we have to vote on something?
Well, we can't now because there's procedures, but we need, we need, they asked for eight iPads.
Okay.
We need to get them as, as a, I, I know it needs to be budgeted. I get it. There's policy and procedures. The liquid IV I would like to see on the trucks immediately. It's too hot. I'm swe, I'm sitting here sweating, just walking from my car.
Okay. I think this isn't the place to discuss it. You're right. But this isn't a, this isn't the, this isn't the time or the place.
So when do we discuss it?
With the chief. Individually.
All of us together?
We can't. Individually.
Well, in a meeting.
Okay, put it on next month's agenda then.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get it budgeted and get them what they need. Okay, need a, a motion to approve the disposal report?
I move that we approve the disposal.
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any old business? Under new business, we need a motion to approve the reelection resolution, 2024-05-01.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And amendment to policy 380, retirement, I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, chief, your report.
My report, I just have a few things on the agenda, on my agenda, rather. One of our CDs is coming due, so we are going to, and I have a, a form for you guys to sign. We're just going to move it from, uh, from fit, or from, uh, from more weather CD is at, into our money market for right now, because we got, we don't have a lot of tax money coming in ad valorem, so we're going to leave it there, see what this next month looked like, and then if we need to transfer it into a, either a higher yield CD or something like that, we'll move it into that. Budget workshop is scheduled for May 16th at 9:00 AM. I know a couple of you can't make it, but we'll, we'll muddle through that, and I'll bring the other two up to date, up to speed when I talk to them. And maybe I'll talk to you before the meeting since you guys can't make it. Also, wanted to let you, everyone, know that fuel pump is up and working at Station 27, so it completes all the repairs at Station 27. So from the docks to the fuel pump, to the station itself, everything is back in working order at Station 27. Probably next month, I will bring, I'd like to bring up the news media between now and next month's meeting to give Wiesn, which is West Coast Inland Navigational District, you know, give them a big shout out. They did a, a bunch of work and gave us a grant on the docks and the fuel system itself.
So the docks and the fuel system is?
Everything's up and running. We don't, we were contracting with Benita Bay to go get it, so now guys run out, do a, do some work or do training or run a call. They just come right back to our docks, fill up. So, and because of the deal with Wiesn that they paid for, we're going to make it for everybody else, all the other public safety. The only one that's ever reached out to us would be Astero Fire. But if, for some reason, there's a big event going on, let's say Memorial Day weekend and the sheriff's office needs some, we're obviously rent it, write down the, how many gallons we gave them, and then bill the sheriff's office, or Astero Fire, whoever, whatever public safety entity needs it. Business after hours this, this month is at the Performing Arts Center on May 23rd, four to six. So if you'd like to go, it's here in Benita Springs. Just let Anna Marie know, sooner than later. The other thing that's coming up, ISO is coming here on the 31st. They'll be doing us, Astero, and South Trail. They were going to do Iona, but since Iona took a large hit, losing two of their stations, they've deferred to do them till next year. The other thing, the city is hosting a Memorial Day on May 27th at 9:00 AM. Just let us know if you're going to attend, so we'll have a spot up on the stage and be announced. And finally, next month meeting because of FASD convention in Orlando. Next month meeting will be June 3rd, June 3rd, Monday prior to. And that is all I have.
Chief, I have a question for you, if I may, Chairman.
Sure. Yes, sir.
So I, I don't want to beat a dead horse and upset anybody.
Okay.
But do we have to put the, because I know we got a budget for this stuff, but do we have to put the iPads on? What do we need to do to get these iPads and liquid IV?
Liquid IV can be done through consumables. iPads, because they're more than 750, they're a capital item. We didn't budget for them. I can look at the budget and see if something can be moved around. But then again, the iPads, I believe you're referring to, come with a recurring cost of $50 a month if they're to be the ones that are using cellular data, which we don't have any of that allocated for cellular data.
Okay. So we just need to figure out what it's going to cost us?
Correct.
And make it happen?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
How many do we need, ten?
I think eight.
Well, there's eight trucks, and then if you want the BCS, that would be 10, then training officers who sometimes run call, like I'll use, Captain Wilson right now is up in Astero as a safety officer for the IMT. So that's, you know, roughly 12, and if you want any of, the chief officer have any of them, so anywhere from 12 to 16. And then that, then, then that also bodes the question for the fire inspectors, who are out doing inspections every day, with a warrant for them to have them, so then that's another five, so.
I can, I can live without them having them, as long as the guys on the line have them.
Thank you for the rest of the reports in our packet. Alex, you're up.
Alex Grant, 11-851, he's Starry Street. This is, I guess, more of an information and request situation from the commissioners. But I've been trying to get passenger rail established back here, and there's a reason for this. The reason is because of our hurricane area problems. Interstate 75 and US 41 are hugging the coast. I'm sorry. Interstate 75 and US 41 are hugging the coast. If a hurricane were to come into Tampa Bay, Bay area, Interstate 75 is only one and a half miles from the bay. I have the maps to show you. Also, US 41 is half a mile from the bay. Not a good situation for anybody trying to leave town here. Also, you've had flooding during the last Hurricane Ian, and Interstate 75 was blocked in Northport. Now, it is true that there were, there was water on railroad tracks in DeSoto County, and the bridge was out on the Colusa Hatch. They have restored that bridge recently, Seminole Gulf has. But the problem is, we have only, I believe, according to the chief, hurricane evacuation shelters for 100,000 residents of Lee County. And there are about a million residents of Lee County. Forgetting the million residents in Collier County. This is not a good situation. I have tried to lobby all the city councils in four counties, Lee, Collier, Charlotte, DeSoto Counties, the county commissioners, and that's where you guys come in, Lee, Collier, Charlotte, DeSoto Counties, and of course, the heads of the MPOs know about it, too. I can give you a copy of the letter I formed, et cetera, and you can do what you want. But anyway, I think this is a public service, life and death, emergency situation, because there's no other way to get out of town. And there was an article, now this I didn't show in the articles that I mentioned, but on Hurricane, Railroads Survive April's 2017 Season, and I, I can give you a copy of that. We'll talk, right?
Thank you, Alex.
Give you that information.
No, no, it's getting out of here alive, Alex.
We, we need to do something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you all for coming.
I'd like to publicly apologize to, to Roy and the gang. I apologize.